To do that.
Here's my wife says you've all got something.
He's late. I told him to come on if he comes anytime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine.
We'll move right to public participation and then we'll go back to D and then we'll go to the afternoon. D is somewhat perfunctory, but we wanted to make sure you were clear on what that was. And that makes sense? Everyone will go, okay?
I have three forms, three, well, yeah, three forms here right now and if anyone else has one, I will take that also. We're going to go into public participation. Each speaker will have five minutes and the board, as a matter of their policy, does not engage in conversation, but are happy to hear your comments. So the first speaker is Patricia Paxton. If you could come to the end of the table and then she will be followed by John Love.
Thank you.
We're ready whenever you are.
Okay. Well, first, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to approach the board. It's an honor to work with any group of individuals that shares the level of commitment that is so clearly exhibited by this group towards the development and support of the students in the state of Michigan. I'm here on behalf of the Network of Michigan Educators. This is a group of educators drawn from a variety of award programs at either the state or national level. I was able to gain entrance into this organization. I was the 2010 Michigan Milken recipient of the Milken Educator Award. Wonderful day. And just saw Mr. Zili here over here with Mark Juilliard over at the Henry Ford School with the next recipient there. So I'm here to discuss Armada. This is the school district that I work in. It's a small rural district. We enjoy wonderful parent support. Some of the most wonderful students in the state of Michigan, in my opinion. We have an excellent and highly talented teaching staff. We have great relationships between the teachers, the administration, and the union. And out of this relationship, the evaluation committee was initiated a few years ago and the process was developed for the evaluation of our teachers. Throughout my work on the evaluation committee, there was a variety of menu choices that the teachers were allowed to select from each year in order to work towards teacher improvement. And one of these menu choices was the idea of lesson study. So I developed a program for the district for lesson study that our teachers each year had the opportunity to participate in. And what lesson study is? A group of teachers, they can be perhaps a grade level or a department, but they have a common interest in the education of a specific topic. Usually it's data-driven. They'll identify something that needs to be worked on within the grade level or the district. They come together and they begin to research different pedagogical approaches to teaching the concept. They collaborate and develop a single lesson plan that is squarely focused on the learning of the student. It's a little different approach because many times with evaluation, you think of coming in and evaluating a teacher specifically, whereas a lesson study approach is looking more on what the students are actually learning. So as the teachers develop this plan, there's sometimes a professional development component that's embedded in there. For example, when I worked with the fifth grade team, I spent some time explaining to a few of the teachers why it is when you divide fractions, why is it that you turn the division symbol into multiplication and invert the fraction. So part of lesson study is reaching out, determining where areas are that you need to strengthen and you move forward. So a very detailed lesson plan is developed and then one member of the team will go through and teach the lesson with a bunch of observers, the team, and it could also be invited guests. And they observe the lesson. And again, they're not necessarily observing the teacher and the delivery of the lesson. They are, again, looking for how are the students perceiving the information? What are they learning? Were we able to identify all the misconceptions, anticipate the proper questions? Were there areas that we may have overlooked? And all that information's taken. The group reconvenes. They have a conversation, a debriefing, if you will, of what was observed. Many times the lesson will be reworked and another member will teach the lesson so that we can continue the refinement of that lesson. A very powerful form of professional development, in my opinion. I think that it's been wonderful for our district to have the ability to collaborate with teachers. That's always a prized time for teachers because of the many demands that we face. And it's interesting because lesson study is not normally associated with an evaluation process. And I think that typically the reason why that is, is it's so critical that teachers can go into a lesson study format with kind of a fail-safe opportunity, that, you know, not being concerned with any repercussions from administration, so to speak, if something doesn't go quite right. And there was extensive conversations with the evaluation committee on how to handle that. And so it was decided that in order to promote this true collaboration without concern with repercussion, that from the evaluation component, they would submit, that the different groups would submit the final product and the final paper and the reflection presented to the staff. And it would be kind of a credit no credit type opportunity for the evaluation process. So I think there's a couple of different mandates from the state of Michigan that this really exemplifies how you can take a couple of different reform efforts, combine them together, and really turn it into something positive for the teachers in the district and for overall teacher improvement and ultimately improving student achievement.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Love.
Oh, waiting for John. I just want to say, Patty, when we visited you at the Milken and then I had a chance to spend a day there, you're really a treasure. And this is the model for how to do, to put together an evaluation system with that collaboration. So thanks for highlighting it.
Yes, a very positive program. Thank you.
While Mr. Love is getting settled, I will let you know that Jeff Phillips will be the next speaker. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Love.
And sir, you're down to four minutes after that outburst that you had.
Well, I guess I'm all done. The, anyway, I just wanted, just starting, I just returned from Russia and I was there for the first day of school. And I was just impressed by what they called the day. They call it Knowledge Day. And I thought that was quite profound.
Knowledge Day?
Yes.
First day of school.
First day of school. I was also impressed by these two presentations that were made today. This is the best presentations I've seen in the time that I've been here. Just outstanding job.
Thank you for that. And you're welcome to end with that if you'd like.
Well, since we're coming back to school, I wanted to suggest a book report. And I saw this lady interviewed on TV, Armana Ripley, and the book is The Smartest Kids in School, or in the world, rather. And here's a copy of the graph that's in there. And this graph just highlights what the challenge is because Michigan rates about 20th in the United States and the United States is below the many of these other countries in this test she outlines in here. The thing that was interesting about the test is it was one that did, had to do, you had to think. You didn't, it wasn't just a matter of analyzing, you know, what's two plus two. It was a matter of looking at some data and then figuring out what to do and what to make out of it. There's examples in the book. But the thing that's so startling is that Finland and Korea and Poland were the three countries that she studied by talking to the students that went to the schools and what were their observations. It's a great insight into the whole thing. One thing that was so stunning to me is this one comment where in Korea, when they take their big test, they ground the airplanes so that the jet noise won't distract the kids taking the test. What a commitment of a country to education and how significant the test is. But, I mean, this is a great book. You should buy one and let everyone read this thing. Even if you read two pages in the thing, it's just two pages that just change my whole outlook on education and what needs to be done. And basically, it looks like what they need, you've talked about it a little bit in your presentation, the idea that we need to educate parents. And on Knowledge Day, they should come in and get a folder. Here's what you need to do if you want to have your kid be a success. You need to read to them. You need to ask them about the school board. These are some of the basic kinds of things. And they talk about, it isn't money. Money has nothing to do with it because these countries don't have the money that we spend on education. But it's just an eye-opening story. Moving on, one of the things that concerns me on how to fix this and reform it is this issue of the Constitution. I took the time to research this and the Constitution says very specifically, general supervision of all public education except universities. That's what it says. It doesn't say local control can do whatever they want. I read the minutes of the Constitutional Convention and I read Madam Strauss's Supreme Court case. Nothing in there changed what it says in the Constitution. That means that these 800 school districts with all the charters and everybody else, they don't have a say that says that we can't have standardized accounting. You want to do this intermediate school district, that thing should be, you can just do that today by a vote. And the thing they said in the minutes of the Constitutional Convention was that superintendent used to be elected statewide. They said, no, we want the superintendent to be the most powerful person in Michigan on education. And then they set up a board of directors to support that and manage this system. And it just makes sense. Other, you can't have 800 groups figuring out what to do and doing whatever they want with these school districts that were set up based on the horse and buggy that was developed years and years ago. So this is the place to make the decisions, to move us into the, maybe the 20th century. And that's, so, you know, I wanted to give you a positive thing. The other thing that's so troubling is this Detroit mess. The whole thing's a mess, but Detroit's awful. And the problem there is three emergency managers. You know, what do you get when you can't figure out there's an emergency and you have to have three people can't figure it out? That's a real emergency and there's no support or brain power. You know, we can go to the moon and maybe he's going there now. He's not here. But we can go to the moon, we can solve this, but it's not going to happen unless we change our thinking on it and make it a national, Michigan priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you get done with this book, we'll have the smartest kids in the United States.
Thank you. Jeff Phillips, please.
Smartest Board of Education.
There you go.
Thank you. Hello.
My name is Jeff Phillips. I'm a trustee on the Kingston Board of Education. By the way, I am looking forward to our discussion coming up on the First Robotics Program. Chris Kingston is actually doing the legwork right now to launch our own team. So very excited about that. But the reason I'm here today is I had some comments on this substitute for House Concurrent Resolution Number 11 that passed the House and I guess the Senate's looking at it right now. And I understand, Mr. Austin, I think you're kind of on board with this plan. Is that what I heard correctly? Or, so anyways, so I just, I just wanted to kind of go through here. I appreciate that the legislature is reaffirming that the state of Michigan has the right to set our educational program and that the federal government does not under our constitution. I'm a local control guy. I guess I got a little bit of conflict there, but I do, you know, I am under oath to support the Michigan Constitution and the authority of this board as well. And so I guess my question with this that's kind of perplexing is there's this section in here that says, resolve that the State Board of Education and Michigan Department of Education may implement Common Core standards, blah, 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 so long as, that the local boards, if they choose to develop or adopt a different set of standards, remains with locally elected school boards. Should they determine different standards such as more rigorous expectations for their students, including teaching high school udiclean geometry and classical English literature or different developmental standards for kindergarten through third grade? So I guess what I'm not understanding is if we're supposed to have that kind of flexibility, how does that work with the smarter balanced? And are we doing smarter balanced next year for kindergarten through third grade? If we did a different English literature program, you know, all of my teachers are telling me they're teaching to the tests and they're really frustrated by this time that's spent preparing on test prep. And so I guess, would we really actually have this local flexibility if we're following with the standard testing program? And then I also comment on this report that you guys and MDE are going to be offering the legislature that they're requesting by December 1st about different testing methods and options. Will we, as local districts, be able to give any input in what we'd like to see in the assessments? Because in Kingston, our discussion has been about our district vision. As Kingston Cardinals, we believe in developing creative minds, building leaders, fostering a love for community, and striving for excellence. So the big dilemma we have is what assessment tells us how well we're doing on these four things? And my concern with smarter balance and a lot of the things coming from that whole arena and Common Core is I think there's a major disconnect when it comes to this goal. We all want to be successful in a global economy, but what does that really mean when you have, the nation of India alone has taught English since kindergarten for an entire generation now. They have 150 million people who just graduated with bachelor's degrees and master's degrees. They can do engineering jobs for 15 or 20K. So if we're all building up for college prep and for analytical reasoning skills and retention, memory retention and so on, is that what's going to be successful in a global economy? Or are we going to really want to focus on our right-brain, creative side? Because it seems to me that the way that you get your products to be competitive in a global marketplace is not just for it to be functional, but for it to be creative, to have a design element, to have the kinds of, you know, unique aspects that you can put out there that make it something worth buying more than all, you know, stand apart from the rest of the crowd. I just don't see where we're going getting us to that point. And so I really want to know, where is the right-brained test? And could we maybe have a conference or something where we would invite school boards to send whoever they would like to represent their district where we could have some workshop session to kind of discuss, what do we want to get out of these tests or assessments? And is even tests the only direction we should go? Because we have all of our schools linked with these fiber optic networks now. I would love to see us do some more inter-district peer review and not just where we send a team in to do a walkthrough and file a report, but maybe actually have students from differing districts critique each other's work, send it to each other online, get some kind of data from that. So anyways, thank you for the time.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for comments.
Are there any more forms? Thank you.
Thanks.
Vanessa and Linda, if you could join us on the robotics grant. This is kind of perfunctory. We'll have to put it on consent, but we wanted to indicate why we brought it back. I think this can be pretty brief and then we're going to call the afternoon order. We'll introduce our new team members.
Okay. So like Mike said, this is probably reasonably short. We are bringing back the criteria for the First Robotics Program. We added a criteria that tries to incentivize, and I'll let Linda talk a little bit more about it, that tries to incentivize districts that look for ways to grant credit for participating in these programs. The larger wraparound is that we're looking for this across our grant programs right now, ways that we can support things like more personalized learning options for students. I think some of the comments from the board at a previous meeting about our tech readiness and whatnot caused us to think in new ways, as well as, you know, discussions with the superintendent, about are we leveraging all of the grants that we put out to support key initiatives like personalized learning? And if not, could we be more, more specific about it? So at superintendent's request, we took a look at these criteria and we're bringing them back now along those lines.
So if you look at the item that you received, the only change in the item is on page three. At the top, under proposed by staff, the third bullet, and all we're adding is the wording, applicants are willing to offer elective high school credit for students who have successfully logged 60 hours, provided their team attends a minimum of two district competitions. We got those numbers from First Robotics and that's what, that's what a good participation looks like. And so that's the criteria we put in here. Our goal here, however, is to figure out ways, as Vanessa said, for kids to be able to get credits and get, and meaningful credit for something that they're doing when we have a grant where we can tie that in. And this is an opportunity for us to do that and put some real meaning behind this besides the opportunity alone. How do we transfer that into some meaningful credit?
Good. Cassandra.
I think this is, I have no issues with this whatsoever, but I'm always trying to be weary of what the unintended consequences might be. So would this impact some schools that could have applied for the grant will now not be able to? Or do you have a clear understanding of what the unintended consequences might be if we go forward with this?
Unintended, obviously, no. We don't. But one of the things, one of the things that we would encourage as we go forward with the training on this, because we always do webinars as we open up grant competitions, is to ask them to think about how might they do that? How might they achieve that? And they'll have time to put that into place for a second semester sort of a situation. So I don't think that it will have unintended consequences that are insurmountable.
Yeah, I don't either. I think, that's a good question. I think what, and if it did, by the way, then maybe we'd have to relook because we're trying to look for opportunities where we can kind of guide the different thinking about giving credit. John's kind of talked about this for a number of years now and as I have. And there's a piece where, but how? You know, so I mean, this kind of puts meat on the bones. Well, here's one way. You know, one way is they're obviously getting an experience that you're going to be able to count some level of credit for, and that's the thinking behind it, but.
So just one more thing, and this is a language issue, but are willing to seems to be kind of ambiguous because I can be willing to do a lot of things. It doesn't mean I'm going to. So is that the intent?
No.
Or is the intent that they actually are going to?
They will, that they will.
So if that's the case, then I would suggest maybe strengthen that language a bit.
I'll leave you.
Is the intent to open the program again next year for new applicants? Or is this going to be a multi-year program for the schools that are applying this year?
I'll look to Bruce.
Because it should be stated in here. Unfortunately, I've written applications and given grants. So, you know, I have a unique perspective on this. And as I said to Linda, there's some clarity that could be bolstered by saying this is $3 million for three years. And what you're saying in here is that it's not necessarily that you're going to give out a million this year, correct?
That's the piece I'll turn to Bruce on. What you pointed out to us earlier and I'll point out to the whole board is that if you look on page two, under purpose and background of the grant, it's a quote of what the State Aid Act provided for us, which was $3 million. And the language says in 1314 school year. However, we've been informed that this is a project-based grant and it is intended that those $3 million stretch over three school years. So out to 1516. And so the concrete piece of this, Bruce, whether or not it's a million each year for three years or if it's?
It's not a million for each three years. The, there's actually categories. So there's coaches stipends, there's reimbursement for startup and also for continuation. So that's why there's some ambiguity there. Both districts that are operating their programs now and are starting new programs will receive funds. And they'll have to apply each year. The way they apply is they get a first registration number and they submit that registration number to us and then we fund on that, both for the stipend and for the reimbursement to get started. And then if they score well enough to go to states and nationals, there's additional funding to be come along. And the way the funding is structured is this one-third, one-third, one-third. It was the state budget office that indicated that the legislature intended this to be a three-year project. So.
So that still doesn't really address, and I can talk to you about it later, but are you intending, if people do well, to roll it over to the next year if the applicant wants to continue?
They will have to apply each year.
So they won't be given preference necessarily to a new program that has all this?
It's a first, in this way, it's a first come, first served. Get your registration number each year, submit it to us, and we will find as many teams as the legislation allows, which is, I believe, about 500 teams a year. So that's why we believe the funding is going to run out, especially since it's limited by category. But it was the state budget office that said it was a three-year project.
Well, as an applicant, which I'm not, I would, I think there's wording that you can put in here that will describe the scope a little more clearly. And it's hard because you're getting the money from an outside source. This is not, you know, the Skilman Foundation designing its own grants for its own money. But I think you have a good understanding of what's required and it's a little bit harder to understand it from what, it could use some more fleshing out.
And we issue an RFP off of this criteria once it's approved.
So this is just to make us happy?
This puts the authority of the state board behind the criteria.
So it is just to sort of make us happy, all right?
No, that's an important step.
Okay.
Legislature appropriates the money. The state board.
This is, this is our other icon. I mean, it's trying to establish our authority and continue to.
If that's all it is, that it doesn't have to be more explanatory, but I have seen people come back to the state board minutes when there's a gap between us making a decision on something like this and the actual papers being posted on the internet. So the more clarity you can provide in here for it, I think the easier the process will be for the applicants when they.
We'll do that. Yes, Michelle.
Just a quick, I want to make sure I understood correctly, that they would get credit for it?
Academic credit.
Academic credit? Based on?
Local determination of that.
Based on science?
So, yeah, so it'll be science credit based on showing of competency? So, I mean, I'm, I'm, let me just tell you my own bias. I have a little concern about competency-based type credit. But it sounds like this is pretty rigorous. So, I mean, I don't know what the criteria is to make something competency-based.
That would be up to the local district. A local school board has to approve the recommendation of a school up through the superintendent and then to the board. And they would make the determination based on whatever their parameters are for awarding credit. We say elective here, they may decide to fold it into science and that would be perfectly all right, but we want to give them all the, all the room in the world to work on this. So it's a credit and they will determine locally what that looks like. That's not for us to determine.
So there is no sort of constraints on, so what if a district wanted to go to completely to a competency-based sort of a credit? They could, I mean, they could.
It's local control.
So the state has no control over how credits are earned?
No, ma'am. All we do is lay out the standards and the parameters and then the local districts take it from there.
If anything, I think this could help inform that whole MMC controversy about why we contend regularly that you can give credit as a local district for a career tech sequence, for instance, a construction trace course with algebra. And I think it's just, it's almost such a, apparently such a big paradigm shift. The districts always determine what to give credit for.
So why do you need a personal curriculum if you can just come up with some alternative ways of getting those credits?
I mean, our, our whole regime is standards of learning in different disciplines and credits based on those standards. We want our local districts to deliver those standards, those competencies.
Right.
In any and all variety of ways that they can do so effectively and that they're basically vouching for, we're meeting the standards by awarding this credit.
So nice.
So we want them to follow our standards. We want them to earn credits based on our standards, correct? And we're certainly eager to have them find effective ways to do that, including where they can teach science and robotics, or they can teach math and career technical.
Then why do we need this personal curriculum though, to have this whole big group of people?
Because there's certain circumstances in which some individual student may not be able to get to a particular credit and an individualized basis. We want to allow that option. If there's no way that Johnny can ever learn his math or if he wants to replace something.
If it's just a project, he can get Algebra II credits.
If he can, then he doesn't need a personal curriculum. You're right.
I think that's right.
Not only if you need the standard.
There'll be.
But the standard is whatever the district is saying and we say.
No, the standard is ours.
That's what we say. The standards are, the credit is theirs. In language arts. And those standards translate into credits. I mean, we're usually facing the problem of, as Mike was alluding to, people interpreted the Michigan Merit curriculum, again, poorly named, as like a set of courses, that you have to have a year of Algebra II, you have to have a year of biology. When, what we care about is whether the students master the biology learning that's embodied in our standards.
So if they just learn how to take a test, they can pass science?
If it's a good test and they've learned what's, testing the standards.
But isn't it up to the district to determine that?
At the district level, credit is not awarded, per se, by passing a test alone. Credit is awarded by, by completing the coursework. And so maybe there's tests, maybe there's homework, and there's participation in a project. And just, that's the guidance by which districts award credit to their students. And so they need to accumulate credit. I think an example where the personal curriculum is different than this, I think, I take your point. We heard from the report earlier that one of the most common modifications is to not do the health phys ed requirement in lieu of taking a math course. That's not a substitute in this course or that course. That is, if I'm required to have credit in gym and I'd rather, for my various reasons, I don't want to take gym, I want to take advanced trigonometry for aerospace, I would need a personal curriculum to do that as opposed to retrofit a gym class to include trigonometry for aerospace.
Right, but it's more likely. Right, but it's more likely, it would be like the language, or the Algebra II. A lot of people don't want to take the Algebra II, they want to take a tech class or do something else. They want to avoid Algebra II, for whatever reason, maybe it's legit, maybe, I don't know. But, so, I think the other way is, so they don't want to take an Algebra II, and they want to keep the graduation rates high, so just say, well, just sort of do something else, easy, take, you know, go work on this, on a math project, or go to the academic games, and you can get your Algebra II credit. I mean, I'm just trying to see if that's...
The point is that we can scam...
Is there some way that we have any, to make sure that the standards are not sort of undermined by just giving credits for, quote-unquote, showing competency when it may or may not be the case?
So it's kind of, it's a multi-stage answer. One reason is, there's a lot of, it is not a unilateral decision of a high school to say, let's make it easy for kids to get Algebra II credit and jack their graduation rates up. That has to go through their local control of their board, how you set graduation requirements, how you award credit, there's layers of that.
Unless you're DPS, yeah.
And then the second one is, you ask, how do we know there's any quality? I would say we know there's quality when we give out the statewide assessments. And that's why the statewide assessments provide a minimum standard for us to understand whether or not students are learning at a minimum level.
Right.
Because we can't interfere with 800 different districts about how they award credit. But when it comes time to take that Michigan Merit exam, if you haven't learned Algebra II, you're not going to, that's going to show up on the Michigan Merit exam. So I think that's how assessments at the state level interface with this quality discussion that you're raising. That's a good one.
And it even, it even triggers into, I mean, this is fairly common, so I'm not just saying this for today, but this idea that we, that folks teach to the test what they should be doing, and they may be doing that, but what they should be doing is teaching to the standards, and the test happens to align with the standards. I mean, obviously, we want the test to align with the standards, but they should be testing, they should be teaching to the standards. And then there can be the proper debate about what the standard should be, which this board had three years ago, and which this board has the authority to determine, and did so three years ago, and needs to hold on to its authority to do so, and not give it to some other entity. Because that's, this was fully vetted three years ago, with a lot of the proper debates that were inferred today, and adjustments. Gary, please.
If I might just ask for a little clarity. This discussion in making, for example, first robotics participation count for a credit at a school, is that exclusive to this program, or is this going to be a thing that would apply to taking any kind of a project-based approach to credit for a class?
This one is just to this particular grant.
Okay.
The department is looking for opportunities where we can enhance the personalized learning opportunities for kids.
This is almost a teachable moment. We're trying to say, you have these in your own purview, because of the local control nature of our state. You have in your purview a way to give academic credit. You'd want to, you'd need to prove it to your governing body, ultimately. But that's the whole thing, is trying to encourage, John stated it very well, that get out of the mindset that this is sitting in a course, which may or may not produce mastery. It's trying to get, you know, there are some kids that they're going to learn some concepts and some principles in that robotics competition that they may not have at all in a traditional classroom. And then the local determines kind of the credit on that. But we're, in effect, what we're trying to do is just try to get more clear about examples that we maybe have. This was based, just like Vanessa said, the board triggered us on this a couple of months ago, when it was, well, are there opportunities in this? And we came back, we debrief every, every one of these meetings for at least an hour, usually more. And we thought, you know what, there are opportunities here. Why aren't we trying to move the ball that way with at least the modest ones we have? We don't have many of these opportunities, but the districts have them every day.
And I think that's an interesting point. And the fact that there aren't a lot of these opportunities might be an area to provide some comfort, that it wouldn't be perhaps the escape hatch that some of the other things we've talked about today might be. And just in thinking about it, I know in gross point, we have, in our course of studies, you can take an engineering course at the high school level. But in several years, we haven't had enough students sign up for it, for it to run. But we have a really robust first robotics program, where those kids are doing all those same sorts of things, learning those same sorts of standards. It would be wonderful for them to be able to, to be able to get that engineering credit, to go on their transcript, so that it doesn't just look like an extracurricular hobby, it looks a bit more legitimized. So I think that that option is a wonderful one.
That's a great example. That's a perfect example. That's why the word elective's in there, too. So it could be for that.
That's a good, good example.
So, good? Any further discussion? Is there, I think I need a motion on this, right?
It's on the consent agenda.
Oh, it's on the consent agenda later. Sorry about that. Okay, now, good afternoon. The time is now 2:13. And a quorum of the board is present, the State Board of Ed meeting of October 8, 2013, is hereby called to order. First item is the approval of the Board of Ed minutes of September 10. Their motion, please.
Don't move.
Supported by Dan. Any discussion? Ball in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Done. Public participation, and we're going to introduce new employees for a moment. And with the deputies, I think it starts with Joseph, and then Carol, would do the privilege?
Yes, so it is my privilege to introduce someone that you've already seen today. So Dan Leeds, would you please stand up? Dan Leeds is new to the department. Dan, would you like to, actually, so, we had talked a little bit about how this is new for us, a new opportunity with the Harvard data, strategic data project, thank you. And I wanted to ask Vanessa also to stand up as well to introduce our other person.
And our other data fellow, Shannon Stackhouse Flores. So we're full standing because we share these wonderful resources across our division in service of the whole department. So we wanted to feature to share the introduction. Could you both be willing to just tell them a little bit about yourselves?
Absolutely. So, I'm Dan Leeds. I have just recently completed my PhD at the University of Michigan in economics, where I specialized in economics of education. I have a strong interest in education policy. Right now, I'm housed in OESRA, Evaluation, Strategic Research, and Capability. And I'm extremely happy to be a part of this, and happy to be working on issues of education policy as they confront the state of Michigan.
And I am Shannon Stackhouse Flores, and I'm also in OESRA. The Harvard SDP project is actually what brought me here to Michigan. That's probably, that's the biggest thing that you would want to know about me. I moved here most recently from Atlanta, Georgia, about three and a half weeks ago. So kind of getting a fresh course in all that is Michigan education policy. But I actually got my PhD from the University of Texas in education policy, so I'm not totally new to the policy environment. I grew up in northern Virginia, so I've kind of been around a little bit, but this is kind of my first real, real experience with the Midwest and with the Midwest. So I most recently was working for the University of Notre Dame as an educational consultant, actually, so. Now I'm here.
I didn't have anything to do with, I'm very happy about it, but I...
We don't, we don't wear our Notre Dame colors too much around here.
No, never. Can't handle the truth. Yes, sir.
So how long, what's the term for the fellows in the SDP?
They committed to, sorry, they committed to two years with us. They are our employees of the department, and so we would love it if they would stay with us for longer than two years, but they signed on for a two-year stint. So we have them for at least two years, and we all need to make them feel very welcome, so they stay forever.
Stints?
Stints.
They did, on a serious note, have other options, so this was, this was good for us to land such capable folks.
We did, as a little plug for us and for Michigan, we did get our top two candidates of the ones that we were given. So there was a team of us that put on our...
Our first-round draft choices.
...good objective faces, and we're happy to have the match work out the way it did, so.
Thank you.
We also have Jim Green. Jim Green is working with us in the Office of Systems, Psychometrics, and Measurement Research. We are thrilled to have Jim. We've been trying to get him for a while, and we're finally able to do it. So Jim, would you please talk a little bit about what you're doing for us?
I'm working on data integration of assessment and accountability data from various sources, external and internal, so we can do reporting and analysis.
Thank you, Dan.
And it's my pleasure to introduce Connie Jones. And Connie is in our food distribution unit, and she works with the Child and Adult Care Food Program.
Very happy to be here. I'm CPA, and I've been with the state about 14 years now in other agencies. And I've been hired to be a financial analyst, to help monitor the grant recipients in our programs. So I'm 50% between two different programs, so I'm actually learning two jobs at once. But it's been very challenging, and that's what I was looking for. Doing a lot of budget comparison, budget to actual, making sure that our expenditures meet federal requirements. Very happy to be here.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the MDE team. John, President's Report.
Well, I want to thank my colleagues and Mike and the department for your thoughtful and continuing advocacy around the Common Core, consistently being all together on that. I think, and thank you, Eileen, for testimony at the Senate on our behalf. Much appreciated. You know, I do think the resolution that we ended up with in the House, with good leadership with Tim Kelly and everyone, was very good, mostly, and I think some of the public discussion around it, it did very clearly, and we've talked about this, respect the constitutional and ongoing authority of this board, thoughtfully with the kind of involved expert-led way to set standards, and to reiterate, we as a state benefit by that kind of leadership in setting standards which need to be thoughtful, durable, and then revised episodically. We don't want the legislature to legislate standards every two years. We don't want local school districts to just go any old way themselves, although there's flexibility already built in, as we reiterated. So reaffirming the board's ability to, on an ongoing basis, set standards and the assessment regime, but working through and clarifying the issues around what the Common Core is and is not, and making it very helpfully clear that it is not some of the fears that some have. And so reiterating that was very good, and I'm hopeful that the Senate will find a way to allow us to just continue on. So we'll keep working on it. So I appreciate everybody's help on that. And I think we have some other midsize issues coming up with, we're going to have additional standards that we need to keep working on and improving. And so it's very important that we continue to have the precedent be that the board does this thoughtfully, with full public discussion, and I think that's how we'll continue to do it, with full legislative engagement, which I think we improved upon during this process as well, which is good. And I thank everybody for that. And we have to keep our eye on the teacher evaluation legislation, you know, the Dev Ball recommendations, because they need to come into being, and they need to come into being with resources dedicated to implement them, which is important. So, and then, you know, we will continue, and we'll, we'll fine tune, based on the discussion this morning, the school finance, you know, issue statement, and welcome any additional feedback on that, and then keep moving towards informing the public dialogue about what's driving the financial situation, always linked, and I appreciate, too, what's needed to educate kids well and get the outcomes we want, and then what can we continue to advance in that arena. So, and I want to add, we already congratulated Kathy on her induction into the Heritage Hall of Fame, but I wanted to note again, congratulations, Kathy, and one of the small, but well-deserved honor among many, many that you have already picked up and will continue to pick up for your contributions over the years.
Thank you, John. I have a couple that, one I wanted to mention, because I know, I think Board Member Love was actually kind of correct about the instability of three emergency managers in a row. And I do think we're on a better path with the new law and the consent agreement, and very hopeful that with the help of our staff particularly, and I'm under, I'm almost understating with the help of our staff, with the leadership of our staff on the educational plan related to consent agreement. That's a tremendous opportunity. So far, so good. I would say Oakland Schools has been a great partner on this also, but some of it's execution, and see, will it really transpire? But it's certainly better than just thinking, you know, put a new body in, and now everything will be fine. Because I've worked with all three of them, and, you know, I don't know them personally, but I found every one of them to be, to intend to do the right thing and try to get all the situations resolved. It's just bigger than that. And I think this opportunity with the consent agreement is the first time we've got some thought connected between, you will be in a downward financial spiral if you can't get your academics right, because if nothing else, parent choice and some other things like that. So that's a big positive and a lot of hope, you know, a lot of worry, honestly, too, but hope. John's point, I mean, yeah, we have been fighting with you, alongside you, on the Common Core, because I think it's bigger. It even came up on that other issue a few minutes ago, that it's imperative that the board hold on to this authority. And we, you know, I'm supposed to keep my mouth shut for another, I almost did, but for another week or so. Because I, but we were told, you know, October 1, and this will all be fine, and just, you know, so we'll hope it is, but I think it's really worth the fight. And then if, for some reason, this does tangle up again, we'd have to, I think, put our heads together to figure out how to preserve that authority. It's not just for the sake of authority. This is the right body, the way we did it three years ago, I think. I wouldn't say with malice, but it's been kind of disrespected in a way, and not understood how thoughtful it was done here. A couple of things I presented, you know, I'm called on to do a quarterly report on deficit districts, so I dare not not do it, in concern for our budget here. And again, Wendy signs up, saying, you know, just listen to me and calm down. So I, we go through that exercise, and it actually creates an opportunity. But this time, when Senator Papa George, like he did before, said, well, what I'm asking you to do is to draw a map with new district boundary lines for the entire state, I can assure you, I will be not taking the bait this time. That bait I won't take. I did take the bait, because honestly, I do think, I just do think there's a prime moment. It's certainly not, you know, certainly you could even see in today's report from John, it's only a small piece of the picture, but I do think we can make some progress on consolidation of services, and should try to nail that down when we can. So we'll continue that. A bunch of associations, including our department, were, I guess primarily the lead, might have been MASB on the Fiscal Fourth Art Conference that I know, I think they brought this up last month. Did it be that long ago?
No. It was just afterwards.
Okay.
So I think it was talked about here. It was talked about at this last meeting.
Okay, well, then I'm going to skip that one, if I've already talked about that. But I appreciate, I know Michelle and Kathy were there, and I think it, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. It helps people get ahead of the curve on what they're learning from other districts, what the early indicators are. And a lot of this has to do with, you know, some of the things you brought up this morning. It's very difficult to try to anticipate enrollment in this wide-open world we're in right now, including the one we don't know much about yet, even now, until account dates are clear, as to how K-12, for example, has done in terms of its recruitment, that being the full-time online place. There are districts, by the way, we learned in a different event this week, many districts are contracting with K-12. I think that's a good way to do it, you know, and that's, and then you determine whether or not they're getting the results you want, and if not, you get rid of them, you know. So that, to me, would be a better plan, but the law's the law. Did several school visits. One I'd highlight, I mean, the Avondale partnership with Oakland University, which I know a couple of you were just not able to make the last minute, but you'd really, this is, this is at the forefront of not only student achievement, but teacher prep. It's an unbelievable model. And coincidentally, my daughter-in-law works at the medical school at Oakland, and she said, oh, yeah, is that where you're going? I lost half my people the coming Friday, because they were all going over, as medical students, to this, to this one elementary school. They've just got so many wraparound opportunities, and many of them in the spirit that Kathy's talked about with, in terms from their school of social work, their school of, you know, it's not just their school of ed that's working with them. And, you know, they're just lucky in a way, but they reached out, and I give Heitch Superintendent there a lot of credit, Bob Maxfield, who followed me in Farmington, he's the interim dean at Oakland now. It's just, it's an unbelievable model that every, next time we meet with the deans, we're kind of challenging them, that every one of you should have at least one of these hooked up at the hip like that. Skyped with the UP Summit this year. I couldn't make the logistics work to go up and back, and it seemed to go okay. We did a new superintendents briefing. My first one, I told, it was a gentleman sitting where Cassandra is, and he was about my age back in 1988, when I was at the orientation here. And I told them, you see that dark goatee that you have there? And I just kept kind of rubbing mine. It won't last long. It doesn't take till you're this age either. But it's really, it was positive to see a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of misconceptions about the department, because once, I think you see it regularly, but once they see the quality of a lot of the people that work here, I think it just undoes some of their preconceptions of the department for reasons I've mentioned a number of times, you know, where they're... where they're, as hard as we're working at of it, we do have compliance functions that we just can't get around, and that's what they kind of hear and remember. But a lot of good people coming in, very diverse group, you know, compared to, quote, "old days," that's all good to see. MVU had a Teacher of the Year reception. Retired teacher is, is now, he's a retired traditional Detroit teacher, who's now the Teacher of the Year for the MVU Online Teacher, which I thought was an interesting evolution and, and good thing to think about, how to keep someone back in that maybe every day doesn't want to be in the trenches, but really wants to still offer. Spoke, Maureen Corgan pushed me hard, appropriately it turns out, to rework the schedule calendar, Karen did, to speak at the School Justice Summit, but it turns out it was right, because she needed to show kind of the two department heads that were together on these issues that relate to everything from truancy and trying to have a fair definition of truancy. Kyle's just done a fantastic job on this in leading that whole group, and I think convinced DHS frankly, that we were on the right track in terms of the way we think about it and not, and take out punishment modes and stuff like that for parents that, you know, don't meet the test in a certain way. So I think we're good there. Met with, I'm asked by the university presidents to meet once a year. I did that last week, largely uneventful. Pushed a little bit of the, I had just been at Oakland, so asked them to be thoughtful about that. That's something they might want to be included in. They, they seem to be very supportive of the EPI scores, by the way. They brought that up, so that was good to see.
Of the new scoring methodology?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, to the degree I was speculating there, I mean, they're probably like me to some degree where you're nodding and thinking, "I really have no idea what you're talking about." You know, whatever. It wasn't, it wasn't like they were prepped to be in disagreement with anything, so.
I meant the government shutdown. Can you speak at all to the impact of that, the federal-
Maybe Marty and his legislative, Marty went on my behalf to a special cabinet meeting on this today, Marty and Jane did, so we'll do that under your-
So I understand Carol went on vacation for two weeks and they shut the government down. Prevent them from doing something so crazy.
Yeah. And I think that concludes my report. And now Gary, we'll jump right to you, sir, and-
Terrific.
Thanks for encouraging the teachers in the lobby. I think that meant a lot to them, that you spent some time with them.
Oh, absolutely. It's always great to see pre-service teachers and to be able to give them some positive when sometimes they don't always hear that, or they don't always see that. But, you know, this, today was, I think, a really great example of a lot of the positive things that are going on, and we've had several success stories and several successful ideas and recommendations that've come out of everything we've heard today. So I'm hoping to kind of echo the success sentiments and tell you a little bit about what the last month has looked like for me, and share some of the successes that I've seen since I've only had some from an indirect way, working with students. But this last month has been a whirlwind, and I'm sure that as you've worked with the Past Teachers of the Year, that's a statement that probably comes up often, but it's so true. When someone said, "It's going to go quickly, and it's going to go very quickly," they were right. I've been doing instructional coaching full-time for six weeks now, and it has been both a challenge and a reward at the same time. The challenge started out that the first three weeks were quite an adjustment to not be with students every day, and that was a little bit difficult for me. And as a former science teacher, I'm working with science teachers some of the time, so I get to see some of my own former students in other classrooms. And it's so challenging to not do what I naturally feel that I should be doing when I'm working with students. But it's been a wonderful experience to be the guide on the side for teachers now and to coach them through those things that they've always wanted to do, but maybe didn't have the opportunities to do them on their own before. I've also had the chance to see hundreds of classrooms, hundreds, and I've worked with hundreds of teachers in the past month alone. It's kept me busy. I'm still married, thank God, so that's good.
To a teacher.
Yes, to a teacher, so that's, that's helpful. But it, just this instructional coaching piece has become so much more illuminating to me that I think there's a need on a wider scale. And I know we've, we've kind of heard that from several of the comments this month and last month, but that need, I think, is so great, and I think it could help fill some of the voids that add to the complexities that we're talking about in some of these issues, to be able to get some, some instructional experts to go and work with teachers, but who are also teachers and aren't instructional experts from the sidelines and from somewhere else. So I wanted to share with you, I'm not one for PowerPoints if I don't absolutely have to, but I wanted to kind of showcase a couple of technology pieces that I've been working with. One of them is called Tumblr, and Tumblr is a microblogging site. And what it does is it allows you to create a blog post or a really, a small article that has some media and some text to it. And I've been using this to capture short ideas and snippets of what I do on a regular basis, so that at the end of the year I can hand up like a digital journal. And the other piece that I wanted to showcase today is a tool called Instagram, and you might be familiar with one or both of these, but Instagram is a photo-managing app for mobile devices, and it lets you take photos, add a caption, and you can add effects and frames to them. But it's given me the chance to kind of create a visual diary of my experiences over the last month, and I'm hoping that by the end of this year I'll have hundreds of great photos to be able to tell a short story of what I've been doing. So I'm just going to poke through a couple of the highlights here. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any point. So the last time I saw you, my highlight was that I was on the front page of the Free Press. Since then, and of course, the highlight of that day is that I walked in and at my desk was some flowers that I had from Lupe, which was so wonderful to make me feel welcome. So I took that picture, I added it there. I got immediately to work that week on writing a grant through the Memic Foundation to set up a pilot program with four teachers in each of the core four areas, math, science, English, and social studies at the high school level in Gross Pointe, with an iPad and an Apple TV, and all of the accoutrements that go with that to make them work really nicely. And this is going to be a year-long pilot where they're going to try out and see if mobile teaching in their room is useful to them, and if it's going to be helpful to student achievement, to student engagement, and to a variety of other outcomes. So this was a picture that kind of showcased setting that up. This picture here, I guess I can blow them up a little bit for you. I also had the chance to go and see classrooms. So I saw a physics class where they were doing experiments with, dealing with gravity by dropping objects from the top of three floors up and trying to hit a moving car below.
A real car?
A toy car.
A toy car. Reminds me of my youth.
Yes. So one of the fun things about this is it's what we call a challenged-based learning scenario. So instead of doing a story problem on paper, we bring the story problem to life. The kids are given the actual materials and the actual context, and they have to take real measurements and perform real calculations in real time, which makes things not work ideally as they do in the story problems, and adds an extra layer of depth to their, their problem solving and collaboration. So that was a really great one. I got to go and see classrooms in action. This is a chemistry class run by a first-year teacher who actually took over my teaching schedule at Gross Pointe North High School, and here is her facilitating a discussion to debrief a lab experiment that they just did using whiteboards. So she has, the desks are all moved out of the way so that the kids can face each other, and on two-foot-by-three-foot whiteboards, they showcase what they've collected in their data, and they give kind of a mini poster presentation. From there, I had the chance to present to the Galileo Teacher Academy, and the Galileo Teacher Leadership Academy works with about thirty districts in southeast Michigan, and they have anywhere from two to five teachers or educators from those districts who go through a two-year cohort program. I know that this board is probably familiar with the program, and I know that Mike had a role in the founding and getting started of that. So I had the chance to provide a small workshop for them. It was a two-day workshop. It reached a hundred and twenty teachers, and it was on instructional best practices targeted at Common Core teaching strategies in all of the core areas. This was the second day of that, and it was kind of a version that used technology to add to an extra dimension. Interestingly enough, I wore the most unique shirt in my closet, and someone else at the workshop had the same shirt. I mean, what are the chances? I thought I had it down. So I've, I've been working a lot with teachers-
You got them on the pants.
I had them on the pants, right? That's right.
We didn't notice the shirt, Gary.
I've been doing a lot of reading as well over the past month, and I never found myself as a reader of multiple books simultaneously, but now I am, and it's been really exciting. I'm still, still trying to figure out how to do that, but I got a book called Teach Like a Pirate, and pirate is an acronym that talks about different levels-
If the Tea Party gets a hold of this.
Yeah, yeah, we probably should. But, so I didn't really know about this book until I got it, and pirate is an acronym for several different engagement strategies, and each of those P-I-R-A-T-E letters are the first of those engagement strategies. Another book that I'm reading you might have heard about today is called Smartest Kids in the World, and so that, that one that came up a little while ago is also one that's been on my, on my library. So I've been reading, I've been working with teachers, I've been working with students in classrooms, and then I got to attend this really cool conference called the M Futures Conference. And I had the chance to join Bruce Umstead and I believe it was Amber Koatch, who's part of the Look I'm Teaching, oh, Look I'm Learning program that you may have heard about before. But this is a really neat and unique opportunity to hear experts in five different areas talk about what the future might look like and what the future might look like together in those five areas of technology, business, education, faith, and art, and just hearing some really interesting ideas going around. I had the chance to have lunch with Bruce and a couple of other folks who were presenters and some really engaging conversations. The other thing that I've been working on has been kind of social media-heavy, and I've been working on a campaign to create resources for teachers around the state, but also to kind of network teachers around the state and to kind of mobilize them a little bit more in the digital world. For me, I've found that connecting with other educators online has been one of my most successful strengths as a teacher. I've learned so many great things from teachers who I've never met in person, but have connected with through my blog and through my Twitter online. So one of the things that I've had the chance to do is to become more reflective, and I heard this going around this morning in some of our presentations about, how do we get educators to become more reflective, leaders to become more reflective? And there's a really easy way. We know it as diary or journaling, but there's a new version of that called blogging. You can have a blog that's really like your journal, just digital, and can be shared with whoever. So I started a challenge for teachers around the state, and it turned into a challenge for teachers around the country called the Teacher Leadership Challenge. And what I've done is that each week on my blog, I post a summary of a thought-provoking prompt dealing with educational issues. So this week's prompt, "How important is the teaching of content knowledge compared to the teaching of thinking skills?" And then I give a little bit of context for it, and teachers are challenged to respond in five hundred words or less on their blog, and to share that blog with me by email or on Twitter. And then we've created a showcase on Google Plus where all of the responses that come in each week get featured, and that also, we have a showcase blog where you can read more thoroughly what everyone's written. So we have about thirty-six teachers in Iowa, Texas, North Carolina, Michigan, and California who are currently participating in this challenge, and there's been some really great discussions and ideas that have been shared. So I'm hoping that by the end of this year, we can have thousands of participants from all over in different areas of education to contribute and to communicate with each other. Along those lines, another piece of resource that I've created is a social media guide. I know it's currently being housed in the Gross Pointe Public Schools website, but it's showcased on the Michigan Department of Education's Educational Technology website and their Facebook page. But it gives a sense of what is digital citizenship, what's a digital footprint, and really what's going on with social media for parents, teachers, and students to get to know. It gives a brief overview, a lot of different resources, and then it kind of itemizes the different popular apps that students and adults are using to connect with each other online. And it kind of gives some of the positives for classroom use, but also some of the pitfalls and concern areas. And then at the very end, it talks about seven or eight different ways that you can check and see what your digital reputation looks like and get a sense of whether you need to do some cleanup or some maintenance or keep going forward doing what you're doing. We have this unique cusp that we're on right now where the kids in the classrooms are going to have much stronger of a mobile or a digital reputation than ever before. Going into the workforce and going into colleges, their digital reputation is going to precede them in so many different ways. And somehow, the adults who are involved in educating them aren't having that same experience, aren't able to keep up all the time. And so we don't always do the greatest job of teaching students how to maintain and manage a digital footprint or a digital reputation, but we really want students to be Google-able later on in life in a positive way. And we want them to be able to have a school or a business perspective look at them on Google and see great things to showcase all that they want to share. But right now, they're in an area where they don't know enough, and sometimes they don't always share the best things. So this was a guide to kind of help parents and educators support students in that way as well. And then just kind of to wrap up, there was a really great thing that happened very recently. I worked with a chemistry teacher at Gross Pointe North High School, and this is a teacher who's been in it just as long as I have, and we started together, but she took on to reading my blog and saw all these interesting ideas that have happened. And she wanted to get into project-based learning, she wanted to get into some more interactive things in her classroom, and so I've been working with her on bringing those to her classroom. And she did this cool project that I wanted to share with you, to teach students about density. Typically, we do density, and we teach it by giving some notes, maybe doing a couple of practice questions or calculations, then we might do some kind of an experiment. Well, she had the idea to repurpose this project where students would determine the density of a person by putting them into a trash can full of water, having the excess water spill over into a kiddie pool. Kids would collect that water, they would use it to measure the displaced amount of volume of water, which is the volume of the person, put them on a scale to get their weight, and be able to get a weight-to-volume ratio or their density. And an interesting thing is, it's very, very engaging, I'm going to go back to a couple of these other ones, very engaging, project-oriented learning experience where the kids have to figure out, how can you find the density of a person? And they designed this project all on their own, carried it out all on their own, and the teacher facilitated connecting it to the content standards where it was applicable. But they got such a rich and collaborative experience out of it.
No help from Archimedes?
There was plenty of help from Archimedes on this one, but the Archimedes tie-in comes after. So they have the context of, do you remember when she was in the garbage can full of water? Well, let me tell you about how Archimedes had the same experience in his bathtub.
Okay.
And so it still connects in the same way, but perhaps in a reverse sequence.
Interesting.
So it gives the kids some physical context first, and then the, the traditional learning comes after.
What did you do at school today, honey?
That's right. That's exactly right.
How could my granddaughter, who's a chemistry teacher, get that?
She could go on my website, and I can share it with her that way.
Okay.
Yeah, we can exchange that after if you'd like.
Okay.
The last couple of things I wanted to showcase with you are kind of school-related. Our district had Spirit Week this past week, and so it was homecoming. We have a tradition that we, we hijack the local Big Boy, and we bring it to school, and they dress it up in a toga, and it used to be more of a thing where there was actually some thievery, but they now have an agreement with Big Boy, and they wrench the Big Boy. Works out a lot better. Works out a lot better.
That's funny.
And then last Friday, I had the chance to present and speak for a group of about thirty superintendents from thirty different districts in metro Detroit, and this was an opportunity for me to get to know them, tell them about my role and my work as Michigan Teacher of the Year, offer my services to help their teachers in their district, and then also to showcase a project that I'm currently working on, and this is something I'm going to extend an invitation to all of you to attend if you're able. This is a conference that I, myself and another teacher have put together in Gross Pointe. It's called GP Inspire, and it's modeled after TED Talks. If you've seen TED Talks before, they're kind of short inspirational or short influential speeches. And we think that students often have inspirational ideas, but don't often have an inspirational platform to share them with others. So we've put together a conference where we invited twelve schools from metro Detroit to select one student representative to come and give a five-minute inspirational talk. It's on November fifteenth, it's a Friday night, and you're going to be able to see twelve students give twelve inspiring talks from twelve different areas of metro Detroit schools. And it could be anywhere from a kindergartner to a twelfth grader, depending on what the school district chooses. But we've done this in partnership with the Galileo Teacher Leadership Consortium to get participation from schools who we already have a relationship with. And these are just some of the things that I've been working on amongst others, and I wanted to share all of that with you. So again, thanks so much for the opportunity. It's been great to get to know what's going on and to get to, to learn a lot more about what Michigan schools look like, and I'm looking forward to a lot more coming up in the next several months.
Great. Thank you for not, thank you for not becoming a doctor. I appreciate the change of profession.
I just want to put on our, a future agenda for us, that we should revisit the criteria for selection of teacher, Michigan Teacher of the Year. I mean, we keep getting these slackers.
Wow.
And you know, Gary would be-
I can say as wow.
Well, thank you.
It is a wow, and I, and I know that Gary would be the first to say, this is, this is, how do I- And I know that Gary would be the first to say, this is, this is, how do I say this? It almost made it, just almost taken away the compliment, I don't mean to. There's a lot of great teachers like this.
I was going to say that, yeah.
We don't, it's the first thing you said in your typical humble way when you were announced and surprised you got up and talked about, you know, your own mentor teachers when you went to high school there. So I mean, yeah, you're just a great example, as Dan said. And it's just the more we can showcase that, the more the detractors take a deep breath. So, thank you.
Yeah, the detractors are definitely out there. They're doing a lot of reading about things that aren't as positive. Still trying to find a way to work within that, that sort of environment to still do and effect positive change when a lot of folks would like to view and just worry about the negative and calling things out.
Right.
Well, you're doing it, thank you so much. Discussion items, we're item H, which is approval of the fiscal year. Well, I think I turned this right over, don't I? Actually, to Carol and to Jane. But this is, on August 27th, the School for, the Michigan School for the Blind Trust Fund Committee, the members reviewed the spending plan for Camp T. The item's now being submitted to the board, to the entire board for their approval. This was already with the trust board prior to now.
Thank you, Mike.
Welcome back, Carol.
This board item has an effect, a positive effect on students, much like Gary's report did because it affects kids at Camp Tashmihida or Camp T, as we, as we finally call it. It's an activity that the board is intimately involved in. You have two representatives actively participating on the committee, Michelle Fekto and Kathy Strauss, who were at the August 27th meeting and, as I said, actively participated. This is an opportunity for, for the board to take a look at the spending plan, see how the funds are used, and ask questions if you, if you have any. So, we thought that we would have Jane briefly comment on the spending plan that the committee approved, then Michelle and Kathy, if you have any comments that you'd like to offer to your colleagues. And then, of course, questions. And then we have a handout for you as well from the camp. So Jane, would you like to go over the spending plan?
Yep. And the spending plan is pretty brief. And we basically took the 13 spending plan, made a few tweaks to it based on some actual spending. And that's what you have before you today. So you can see it's a total of $137,200. Not a real huge budget. It is basically, it's used for running the camp. And the camp has seen a good year this year. There's a lot of positive things going on out there. We had some good work by Amway, some volunteer work. They put in some, a trail and some fencing. And we've had some other exciting things going on, such as climbing wall and some other improvements to the camp. We had, it's hard to compare the count because we're counting differently in the number of kids, but we think that the number of kids was up by about 15% in 2013 compared to 12. So it's, it's doing very well and I, it's a pleasure to be able to present this budget to the board.
Kathy or Michelle, would you like to add anything based on your experiences with us as committee members?
Well, I was going to say that, I wasn't, I was just becoming aware of this camp, but it's, it's available for any school district, for anybody to go to. And the costs to go were pretty, very, very affordable. I can't remember exactly what they were. It was something like 50 or $100 to bring a whole group of people to the camp. And it's, seems like really beautiful facilities, sleeping areas, really, more people should know about it and maybe take advantage of it. So, it sounds like a great place, yeah. Talking about that.
I would say it's really come a long way in the years that I've been aware of it. And I was suggesting that the next year, we take the board members, because we have more board members who have not seen Camp T. It would be helpful, I think, for them and for the people that have been around for a while, haven't been there in a while. Made a lot of improvements in the camp. And it's, some of the things have sort of appalled us when we went the first time. We were so worried about the problems and they've been fixed. And it really is, it's really terrific. And it's more than just visually impaired children now, it's, it's other disabled children and other groups. So, it's really been doing a great job.
And Alex has had a lot to do with that too, Alex. Thanks for being here today.
All right. Now, just to want to say. Thank you, Mike. I was just going to recognize him.
Cassandra, please.
I just have a quick request, and I think I may have made this one last year too, but it's, it's much easier to look at a spending plan when you can compare one year to the next. So, is it possible in the future to do the two-year, the current and the next fiscal year, so we can see what those tweaks might be?
Yes. And I can tell you generally, but yes, we could compare next year. Last year's budget was $133,000. And there is a little bit of an increase in salaries. We had economics. There's a little bit of an increase in telecommunications. Most of that was internet services. There is a little bit of an increase in purchase services. And the rest of it was pretty stable.
Discussion? Then may I have a motion, please?
So, we'll support it.
Supported by Eileen. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, same? Thank you.
And thank Kathleen and Michelle for being on the committee.
Mertz will give you the handouts to share with the board.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is Marty, if you'd join us at the table. And this is kind of a Marty and Cassandra show in many respects, but I think Marty's going to kick it off. I didn't mean that to be funny, or was that something else? Okay. Sorry. You know, we get it.
Dance.
It's the hour. So Marty, please.
As John pointed out, there is this little thing called a federal shutdown that's affecting the federal government initially, primarily for us now. And it may, if it continues, affect the work we do here at the Department of Education as well as across the state. And I don't think you guys need a primer on what's going on in Washington. I hope not, so I'll spare you that. But the impact for schools as far as the federal programs, most of the federal title programs are forward-funded, so we're, we're pretty good until throughout the budget year 14. There are a few programs that are, that have a more immediate impact. And those being school nutrition, that is a reimbursement program where schools provide meals each month, and then at the end of that month, they send in their, their bills and then they get paid. So we're good through October. But if, if this continues, if the shutdown continues, there's no federal money flowing, then those October bills will not be able to be paid in November. So that is an immediate impact on school meals. There's also child and adult food care programs that provides food for child programs and adult foster care homes and things like that. Those are also impacted by this. There's another program that could be impacted by the middle of November, that's the Child Care Development Fund. Those are direct subsidies to childcare programs, 27,000 kids roughly a month. And those subsidies will be shut down. It also includes money that goes to ECIC for their help with their operations. So, all of that is at risk of ending should this federal impasse continue. I know that they're working on things in Washington, but there's another deadline coming up, which is October 17th, which is the deadline for the...
Debt ceiling?
The what?
Debt ceiling.
The debt ceiling, thank you, talking about density. And so, so that's a big deadline. Because if that happens and the debt ceiling is not taken care of, then there's a fear that the stock market will have tremendous pain as well as global economies because everything is based on the American currencies. So, I mean, that is, that is a big issue that is coming up a week from now. So, a little more than a week from now. So those are the direct impacts soon. But like I said, most of the title programs are okay through the, through the school year because they're, because schools have already gotten their funding for that. So, does that answer the questions about the federal impact? Okay. As far as the state, I know John had talked about the work and Mike and John talked about the work that's been done on the Common Core. The Senate is working on its resolution, solutions, what they want to do. We do expect some action in the Senate this week. And we expect that they will develop their own resolution, concurrent resolution or resolution or some kind of bill to meet the requirements for an affirmative action. And so, how that, I have not seen the language on any of those things, but we expect it to move through the Senate this week. And so we are hopeful. As far as educator evaluation system, the recommendations by the council, Dr. Ball made a presentation to a joint House and Senate committee. And then the Senate Education Committee on its own had a meeting with Dr. Ball over in Port Huron, which is in the chair's, Chairman Pavlo's district. The House Education Committee has a meeting tomorrow at 10:30 a.m. to also take more testimony. On tap are the AFT, MASA, the secondary school principals, and Wendy Larvik, our legislative liaison, will be giving a short presentation, kind of on the bridge version of what Joseph presented to the board. And so, nothing formally, there's no bill formally been introduced on the educator evaluation, either a House or the Senate. So I think right now, they're just taking testimony and gaining knowledge at the legislative level as to, you know, what people think of the council's recommendations and maybe on what, where they should go.
Where they should go?
Where they should go. Where they should go with that legislation. I was sad.
Can our resolution that we made on that be part of...
It's been sent, yes.
But also repeated in the testimony, yeah.
Yep. Yep. And then we have the Legislative Committee meeting and I'll hand it over to Cassandra.
So, we did do a statement, as the board knows, on Common Core. It was a very quick statement, just basically affirming our appreciation of the legislature's discussions regarding Common Core and urging the state senate to affirm the role of the MDE to implement the CCSS without delay as delay can potentially jeopardize many educational reforms, including the ones the legislature themselves have enacted. So, that was sent out a week ago, I believe, Marty?
Yes.
About a week? Yeah. So we did do that. And then we have also drafted a statement regarding House Bill 4490, which is a bill that Representative Stallworth has introduced to address suspension and expulsions within our public schools. And, do you have a copy? Thank you.
Yep, I have a copy.
Representative Stallworth was hoping to get here earlier and couldn't get out of the committee, but the fact he hasn't showed up means he must still not have gotten out. But he certainly would come again to share his encouragement towards the type of legislation that is, and I appreciate the committee taking up on the seven issues.
So, this statement, which we can talk about, the last paragraph includes activities that the board and the department are also involved in. But really, the statement reaffirms the fact that the Board of Education welcomes the intent of this particular bill as in 2011, the State Board of Education introduced and passed a statement regarding expulsions and suspensions and our desire to see local school districts review their policies to make sure that they weren't overusing basically expulsions and suspensions to, you know, discipline students for reasons or issues that really other forms of, of discipline would address. And so, the statement reads, "The State Board of Education welcomes the intent of HB4490. This proposed legislation thoughtfully defines procedures public school officials should follow when authorizing the expulsion or suspension of a student. We urge the legislature to support its passage or that of a similar bill to reduce unnecessary and inappropriate student suspensions and expulsions. The SBE has long been concerned about excessive use of expulsion, of suspensions and expulsions in Michigan's public schools. In 2012, the SBE recommended the following resolution calling on schools to adopt discipline policies without mandates for suspensions or expulsions for most behavior issues," and then includes a link to that particular statement. "Michigan has received one of three new state grants from the National Association of State Boards of Education to curb the use of out-of-state, out-of-school punishments in an attempt to improve student success. Activities will include developing a state board model policy on alternatives to suspensions and expulsions in schools, revising the existing state board model code of student conduct, and developing an online resource to further implement the state board model policy on alternatives to suspensions and expulsions in schools. Given the boards and departments' commitment to alternative forms of discipline, we strongly support your legislative initiative." So with that, I will open it up to any tweaks or comments that you might have.
I think an issue that hasn't been given quite enough attention is the school districts or schools' response, ongoing responsibility for services to students who may be suspended. And I, I think, as they continue to receive funds for these students, they have an ongoing obligation to deliver services. Is that addressed in the bill or...
I believe it is. Let me open it up here for you.
I think that's always been one of the issues. I think the bill...
I don't think it does.
It tries to nurture relationships or encourage them between the social service agencies and providers to help support kids who, with some constructive stuff, doesn't require it to happen because it would require funding. But if I recall, just the conversation I had with Representative Stallworth, by way of background too, most of you remember, Mary Ann McGuire and Liz Bauer, fellow board members, were longtime champions of us trying to advance work on this front. And I remember Mary Ann encouraged the presentation from the ACLU folks about their research around the incidence of suspensions and expulsions and who they hit and, and the alternatives that were, you know, I know Kyle and others have been great at trying to encourage and support alternative regimes that schools can embrace, restorative justice and other mechanisms and better training for teachers and others about how to avoid those incidents or deal with incidents and not turn them into a automatic suspension, you know? So, there's lots to do here. The question I, and I even met with some young students from Detroit-area high schools who are making this their project to try to help the state encourage, do better with this situation. This legislation is, it doesn't include all of the fixes that we might want to insist on. I think our policy statements have encouraged similar and sometimes different things. But it's certainly headed towards trying to, some tangible steps that do better by this, this episode, these episodes.
So the, the two items contained within the actual bill, one is that, this is, this is an existing bill that has modifications to it. And one of them talks about school officials' documented efforts to modify the pupil's behavior without a suspension or expulsion. And if these efforts have failed to modify, may include, but not limited to, a coordinated behavior plan, alternative programming, referral for individual counseling, behavior contracting, in-school parents' supervision, or other evidence-based alternatives to suspension. And then it goes on to say that if a student is suspended, it calls on the County Department of Social Services or County Community Mental Health Agency shall follow up to coordinate completion of behavior risk assessment that is performed by a licensed mental health or social work professional. Oh, thank you. Addressing the factors described in the subsection. So, not the school itself, but another entity.
Trying to curb coordination to let constructive stuff happen with these kids, but it doesn't, and others help, it doesn't either enforce or insist on local school. You're responsible for the learning for the student. Even if you're thrown out of their school, you better make sure that they're in some program where, that you're responsible for where they're actually still learning something. That would be the stronger one. I don't know what the, what they're required to do already. We've been through this before and I can't remember.
Yeah. I can't either. We can try to get some help on that, but it, it's, it's a good thought. I mean, there is a co-responsibility among a number. I think mental health professionals sometimes are the ones, because we're not often those that can assess some of these issues that are, that are, in one sense, expulsion-worthy, but not remedied by the education entity. But yeah, I like that. We're not, we suddenly aren't not responsible at all. And it would seem like a phrase added to that might be helpful.
It does, I'm sorry, I just get to your point. The existing law, as it is now, does say that if an individual is expelled pursuant to this section, it is the responsibility of that individual... to this section, it is the responsibility of that individual and of his or her parent or legal guardian to locate a suitable educational program and to enroll the individual in such a program during the expulsion.
Up to the individual or the parent?
That's in current law.
I have a situation, I mean, I brought this up, and, you know, we have that task force that's meeting, and it's meeting again a week from today on discipline and whatever. And I have another friend of mine who works with juvenile justice, and they've been meeting statewide group to talk about the same issues. And, the only concerns I, it's like a real balancing act, you know, because I think you need to make sure the teachers and other students, you know, the students are safe, and they're, they're not going to be, you know, when there's fights or whatever that break out.
Right.
That there's, there's enough discretion to intervene and create order. But on the other hand, I guess there's, I have someone in, I'm helping to take care of, who was given a, he's nine years old, and was given a year suspension for bringing a BB gun to school. All right, so, he's nine.
For bringing a what?
A BB gun.
Oh.
To school. Because it was a weapon. And so, and I have my, one of my daughters who was suspended because she put Kool-Aid in her hair, and it had red streaks, you know, so it's like suspended for, and then these dress code violations, they, when he wants these uniforms, but then if they're out of uniform, they get kicked out of school. And some of these kids don't have money to have, or have clean clothes. And the, the young man that I'm talking about, this nine-year-old, he's, he's become a ward of the state. And he became a ward of the state because his parents were unable to take care of him. So what does that do for, I mean, I see this as being a very complex issue, and, where I do see sort of this heavy-handed, I think it has a lot to do with trying to keep order when the schools are, the class sizes are so large, counselors are not available to intervene, because they don't have enough of them. So, I do think this is really an important issue. I want to say I support it, but I just, I want to have more time to think. All right, I'm done. Yeah, give her.
I think.
It's okay. Yeah, multitasking.
I would encourage us, I think the resolution, we're basically saying, we are advocates for additional attention, this or similar legislation, it's not perfect yet.
Right.
But, there are certainly, and if anything, this is a very modest bill, which encourages more coordination and attention to the issue. It doesn't demand or require this, that, or the other thing. So if anything, there's probably more to do. But I think us, as we are drawing attention to the topic, which we have an interest in, our staff and department, and our own policies are trying to inform the treatment of, better treatment of these episodes and better outcomes for kids to go through them, so that they, and we certainly encourage related legislation that is attentive. So I think I would move to support the resolution and encourage the movement of this type of legislation.
Moved by John. Supported by Cassandra for discussion, further discussion. Kathleen?
I'm wondering if we could get a copy. I don't know if everybody has seen the old resolution. You can do it by link, but did they have it here today? Because that talked about positive behavior support.
We have, yep, she has it.
Oh, thank, I think that would be helpful to people who may not have seen it.
Yeah.
So.
Bert's reading your mind.
The intent is good in this legislation. The intent is good. So that's what we're saying. The last time I sent an email, I thought, I was thinking that the resolution was different. I got two, two of our resolutions confused in my head at 11:30 at night last night.
Where is this legislation now, in the discussion, in the process?
It's been sent to the, I believe, Education Committee.
If I, I had a conversation with Representative Stallworth. He is working to both try to build some support with departmental agencies and actors, but also some bipartisan support for this, this or similar legislation. So, I think he was eager to draw attention to the effort to try to make some headway here, and I think it is a good effort.
So that discussion can continue?
Yeah.
Cassandra, please.
Just one more thing to add. I think the proposed legislation ultimately gives more flexibility to the local school districts, because one of the most important changes it makes, which is a minor change, but actually a huge change, is changing shall to may.
Yeah.
So, the, the current bill basically says, if a student gets into a physical assault, the school, the school board shall suspend or expel that pupil for up to 180 days. It changes the word shall to may, so it gives more flexibility.
Which is a major change, right.
Right.
And that allows, that allows the discretion, the common sense, that, there's a great video that was at the social justice, or the juvenile justice conference that Corrigan had invited me to, that we might want to grab hold of. It was compelling, of real kids in Michigan, for kind of innocent issues, kind of like the Water Ground in one case. In another case, admittedly, you know, the may still gives appropriate responsibility locally. I can still see where there'd be some nerves, because this one kid, it sounded like a plausible thing that he came back from a Boy Scout activity of some kind, so in his backpack he still had a Boy Scout knife, and just had kind of lost track of it. The may is still a hard call, because we can read into the mind for sure that that's what it was, and it wasn't.
They want to be local control, they want to be local control, they don't want to make the decision.
There you go. That's exactly, but I think it's, it is, in my role anyway, I mean, and having been in some of these spots, it does need to have the common sense, local judgment, that, you know, often is going to be severe. But, clearly not when it's something like, you mean, my hands are tied here. There was one, it's a young boy, and then all of a sudden, before you know it, he's in the system, and now he's learning to be a criminal, and this all started with, I can't remember, a very ridiculously innocent act, that they just, no one had a choice. Yes, ma'am?
I was going to say, this, this grant that we got from NASB is, look at student discipline and make recommendations and improve our policies and all that. There's another meeting of that coming up.
Next week.
Last one, Richard and Michelle and I were all there, so I assume we'll probably be there at the next one. So we'll be getting a report to the Board, the whole group will get a report to the Board, and that will feed into this. I'm not sure this bill is going to be, it's not their number one priority in that committee at this point, I don't think. And so.
It's not going to be posted tomorrow?
No.
You know, we have time to feed into this and come up with a really, improve it even.
Yeah. Because as Michelle said, it's complex. I mean, this is a great change, you know, we needed to change the, to may. Having said that, I mean, this is complicated. There are some kids that act out for so, such a variety of reasons, and sometimes we're quick appropriately to say, you know, the home life, and hungry, and whatever, but also, I mean, my experience as superintendent, it just was horrifying to me to realize how many kids are beat up at night. I mean, their stuff is direct as that, but you just, so it's not, you know, and these are in all kinds of neighborhoods and family structures, you know, that I think it's kind of a hidden problem, you know. So then we're expecting the kid to behave, you know, ideally, and you realize there's an underlying current here, where there's something else totally going on that's totally controlling their life, you know. So I think the common sense is really, because that could be something that a teacher knows or a guidance counselor knows, and even if it was fairly severe, says, you know, well, we got to work with this in a different way, not make it worse by sending them home.
Yeah.
Or to the mall, or whatever.
At the same time, there's another aspect to this. I know of a case where a boy brought a knife to school, this was a fourth grader, and his friends all saw it, they thought it was a big joke, and he got away with it. A month later, he got into a tiff on the playfield with one of the boys, and then he threatened, "I want to cut you." Then the boy, who thought it was a joke at lunch the previous month, comes and reports to the school. And, and the kid had to be expelled. And that's the, and that's the problem. You, you bring a gun to school once, and you may be repentant, but you get angry six months later. It's so tempting to use it as a threat and to intimidate other kids. I think that was the original idea behind the, the.
Zero.
Zero tolerance.
Zero tolerance. And, obviously, a kid who's, you know, I mean, the kid who came back from scout camp and, you know, had a knife, or the kid who brings a, a water pistol and is suspended, I mean, that's, I think that's just bad application of the, of the rule, and you're not going to correct it by changing the rules. So, so I think there is a serious aspect of this that needs to be considered. We can always fine tune our policies, and, and one of my concerns, as I mentioned, is I think we need, there's a financial, there's a financial incentive. If this kid is, is, you know, not threatening other kids necessarily, but being defiant and insubordinate, the school is tempted to say, we're easy, better off without him, but if, if we have to forfeit $6,000 in state tuition grant, maybe they'll decide there's a more cost-effective way of dealing with the kid. And, and I, again, I think the principle is that if a student is suspended, then the school needs to provide tutoring or other services, and not say, because we've suspended now, we get to keep the money and.
Right.
Escape our, escape responsibilities.
Yeah. I do think my own experience is that the propensity still will be to be fairly severe or safe. It's almost like, I can remember getting calls, and we've got a bomb scare at Harrison High School. Okay, so after a while, you have to say, we're going to eat it. You can't every day have everyone dismissed, but you worry about it. You know, is this the day? So, I mean, in a little bit that same way, you, I think if anything, the system, unfortunately, is still going to be tilted toward, the kid's got a knife in there, I just can't take a chance that this isn't going to accelerate. But at least it leaves the discretion with a local that has a little more knowledge and says, well, wait a minute, that's not what this is, I've had too much experience with that youngster. But I do think that, right or wrong, the propensity is still going to be pretty severe, and probably often for the right reason. You just can't take the chance of other safety and stuff like that. But, I, I just, there's so many examples of it just not making sense to do it, that it's why the may is really the best change of all.
Yeah, it gives some discretion. The other, the other side of that too, is, you know, I know there are some situations where maybe the administration does not want to suspend or to deal with the parents or whatever, and, and there is a real threat to the other kids or the teachers or whoever, and they're feeling like they're working in an unsafe environment, or they're going to school in an unsafe environment, because an administrator, he doesn't have the, you know, isn't willing to take a stronger position. But, I want to, I am not a fan of zero tolerance policies at all. And, because of their, they just don't leave enough discretion, and I think that word "may" is a good thing, but what I think there needs to be is some due process or some way to make sure that needs are being addressed. And I think a lot of times, kids act out in school that are really troubled and need counseling, need help, need services, which I think their, his bill is saying that it, there would be that, those services. And there would be, it would be nice if it was by somebody who actually knew the kids in the school and had a relationship with them and was able to, you know, figure it out a little more quickly, but, and resolve those conflicts. But, I, I want to say, and I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to vote on it, but, I mean, in general, I like it, I just, you know, I just want to make doubly sure and take some time to adjust it.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a quick, just a quick point. I don't, so, much like the point that Richard's raising about the ongoing obligation of the school to provide educational services to the student who's been suspended or expelled, and they need to address that, which I do agree with. I also, I mean, so our own resolution notes the fact that policies, disciplinary policies tend to be subjectively enforced and applied, resulting in disproportionate numbers of students of color being, particularly black and brown boys, being suspended and expelled. And I don't know that this, I mean, in some respects, this actually provides more discretion that would allow for subjective, you know, disproportionate, so on and so forth enforcement. So, just a note for us, like while I'm supportive of this in principle, just a note for us, I would love to also, like, make sure that we're collecting data in a way that would allow us to discontinue, disaggregate it in a way, and if it gets worse, to revisit this issue. I mean, I don't want to provide discretion only to have folks use it poorly, right, or abuse it, or what have you. So just want to note that for the record.
Good point. Yeah, good point. So any further discussion?
I think, Dan, certainly the intent, I understand it, is to try to modulate the perceived lack of discretion to encourage more of the alternative ways of dealing with situations where, you know, as we heard from the ACLU, where too often it is a administrator, without training or cultural competency, you know, seeing a situation.
Not required to use any alternative.
Right. It feels, I got to demand, you're suspended for that versus alternatives. And, you know, I think what this still doesn't do is get to the, Richard's issue, which, you know, how can we do better to insist that the education community, of which the student is a part, is responsible for ongoing positive support in some way of that person's future versus, you know, you're gone, it's up to you to navigate. And it doesn't, and I talked to Representative Stallworth, there's nothing in here, because of the reality of the moment, that is, is a money demand. If we were saying, as I think our policy says, we want to see more training for educators on how to, you know, integrate better training for how to deal with situations, better restorative justice models, that would require, you know, okay, so who's paying for that, you know? And so, I know Representative Stallworth is reaching for doable steps while acknowledging that, you know, this isn't everything it should be, to try to put in place and finance better practices that help prevent, you know, to deal appropriately with many of these things.
I do agree. I just want us to make sure that we don't so readily assume a good outcome from the kind of change that we're after, that we don't go back and double check just to make sure that that actually does happen.
You know, if I, if I might, I think this is a little bit, this nuance part, which is not small, is a little bit of the same reference I was making to the filter that we have. I can remember as a kid, and I didn't have, I'm not, I'm not African-American, obviously, so that's one more level, but even as a kid who dressed like a Brooklyn kid that went to Long Island, we would watch, I remember this distinctly, we would watch the Long Island kids being treated one way, and the second they saw us, they were assuming we had a knife. So from our point of view, it encouraged us to act up more. It was like, well, you didn't do anything to Joe over there, and now suddenly you're all over me. So, I mean, and that's only on a very superficial way, really, compared to these other issues, but it happens. So it is a training issue, as John says. I think, and seeing Kyle here, this is a little bit of what we're working on with that Justice Summit, trying to figure out how we get to the right people who don't really want to do this. It's not like they want to be unfair, they're just not even seeing it. They're just not seeing it. And then they don't, and then if anything, as I said, it can be the catapult to, to the behavior, and the second one saying, what the hell, you know, you were just over here, and you didn't do squat for the same thing. So.
Yeah, so, sorry, just really quickly, though, in my previous life as an attorney, years ago, clerked for a judge, and saw in back-to-back months, cases show up that involved juvenile justice issues for very similar offenses. And the appeal issue in front of the court was something unrelated to kind of racial disparity in sentencing, but the African-American child, so the same offense had resulted in a much more significant penalty for the African-American child. And the opinion from the court just kind of footnoted the fact that that penalty, under law, was appropriate for the African-American child. What had happened was that an exception had been created, or whatever, the penalty imposed on the Caucasian child was much lighter by comparison. And the footnote, the note here was, look, these kinds of, like discriminatory practice doesn't always mean kids of color are being treated arbitrarily unfairly. Sometimes it means that kids, that white kids, or white folk, or whatever the class is of issue, are being treated arbitrarily, like, advantageously, right? And that's the kind of thing, so it's just, you know, I just think it's important for us to stay on top of this as we go forward, just to see what happens.
We hear that, we will. By the way, a year later, I was wearing Madras shorts. I don't know, I mean, I thought at that time, what, what are these people doing? I don't know, I mean, I thought at that time, what are these people doing? I look like West Side Story, and these people look like Madras shorts. So, we have, we have a motion. Any further discussion?
Just as good as, as Dr. Zile's stories.
I can't cite a play, though, other than War Horse. I almost went back to War Horse when he was giving us that.
You already cited West Side Story.
That's true. Oh, yeah. Even right over my, yeah. Mine are the non-electual variety. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Any abstention? Okay. Thank you, motion.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. All.
Cite Grease.
That's a better one, thank you.
I just have one more quick reminder. We had talked last month about the school closure policy that we wanted to pull together, and I had asked if anyone had recommendations to send them to me, and I've received absolutely none.
Sorry.
So, I mean, I'm happy to pull something together that you can all review, but it would be great if I had some input ahead of time, so, if you could send that to me.
Particularly from people who put that on your agenda.
That's right. Particularly if it was your idea, Dan.
If that line fits, right.
Cassandra would be a good teacher because, did you see the look that she just gave?
She grinned right into compliance, sorry.
All right, okay, we'll get on that.
That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Marty, too. Remove right to consent agenda. Have a motion, please.
So, move.
Cassandra, supported by Catherine.
Does it discussion time?
This is consent, so we don't.
Oh, we can't discuss. I just want to know, but did Marshall get another grant?
Marshall?
Is this what we're talking about, all that?
M and M, Marshall?
No, that was, that's his report.
Marshall Mathers?
Marshall, City of Marshall, where Jace Bolger lives, did he get another $350,000 grant for their, anyway, I know I'm out of order, just call me out.
You're a rebel.
Right, but now, I don't want to let it sit.
Is that another grant that they got for just Marshall?
No.
Is this a separate one?
Carol?
Is it the same one as before?
You're the speaker.
Okay. Okay, okay. I was just wondering how many earmarks.
You're going to go on.
Just one mark.
Okay. Did I, yeah, motion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Thank you. Comments by board members?
I just want to, well, there's two things. Last, let's see, September the 30th through October the 3rd, I attended a STEM summit by, sponsored by Naleo, which is the National Association for Latino Elected Officials. There were 17 states represented with school board members, and I was the only state board member. But what we talked about was STEM, and it was extremely very, very informative, and there's a lot of work for me to do as a Latina and our board to do as far as the Latino students are concerned in our state, and all students, because those are going to be the jobs of tomorrow. And I think our, the department and our board and the state is already going towards that end because they informed us by very, very special people, Latinos at that. I was real proud to be a Latino at that summit. But I'm going to be bringing some of those people to Grand Rapids, so hopefully you can join me for some of those things. A doctor, an MD from California that talked about medicine, and it was, all of them were excellent. So, that's in the government shutdown the day I arrived. So, I don't know what that means.
Is there a connection?
We went through our work anyway. And the other one is, when was it that we passed the in-state tuition recommendation? Was it back in?
Like May.
May. No, it was farther than that. Well, anyway, so we initiated that, and since that point, I just received an email that Wayne State just adopted their in-state tuition.
U of M.
And U of M this summer. So, those are two after we made the recommendation. So, I'm really happy to report that because more students are going to be getting an education, and more students will be going through STEM. And so, that's very hopeful for the economy, our state, and education as a whole.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Eileen?
Richard and I, I believe Richard, are we travel companions in some way next week? We'll be attending the Foundation for Excellence in Education Summit in Boston, and the discussion topics will include meeting the needs of all students with disabilities, revolutionizing America's teacher prep programs, developing strong principles for all schools, other topics. So, I'm looking forward to that. And I just also want to say, only because it happened, my husband and I hosted the former president of Ukraine last week for four days, Viktor Yushchenko. And President Yushchenko probably, oh, he's known for the Orange Revolution, but that followed up is being poisoned probably by the Soviets with dioxin. So, you have a mental image of him in your mind, even if you can't follow it up. And it was fascinating, he's incredibly, he's a lovely human being. He's very noble, I would say, and funny. And I found myself, after we gave him a book on Hubble, on the Hubble photographs, listening to a 20-minute through-the-interpreter discussion of the composition of the Black Sea and why it's preserved so many artifacts under the, she's thinking, this is not what I expected from either an economist or a president.
No.
But he's a very graceful man, and on Thanksgiving Day, Ukraine's been trying to separate from Russia for 350 years. And they voted, the parliament voted in the last year to have a plebiscite on the issue of joining the EU. So, that's on November 28th. 350 out of 450 parliamentarians voted for it. The problem, of course, was that he was poisoned in 2004 as he came into office, and Russia will not easily let go of its hold on Ukraine. So, they're preparing for what they believe will be some unusual circumstances, and hopefully they will stay safe and be able to join the EU. But as John said, what did you say, John? It makes, it makes our civil discussions over even common law appear slightly safer than.
The day she was tasting the food.
Exactly.
We're not going there here. These water bottles are, just check them, though, before you go.
They're good and tight and sealed.
Speaking, if I may, by the way, I don't know why I've been getting pressure, I can't make this next week, and I've been getting a fair amount of pressure to attend, so when you're there, please give my, I already have in every protocol way, but I've got family issues and can't do it. I don't know why, because I've gone a couple of years, but.
It, I've conveyed that, so.
Okay, and I think it's being read into somehow.
They hope that Michigan will have, will get the help it needs on any discussions that involve technology, I think, certainly an issue.
I canceled, I ended up canceling Sunday, or I didn't go Sunday and Monday to NBC Ed Nation for the first time. I get an invite each year to that, and that's where I got a chance to question.
Could I ask, Richard was, last meeting, Richard said you, he was going to a NASB meeting in Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Did you go?
I did.
What was the, what was the result?
September 20th, I attended NASB's conference on the next generation science standards. They had presentations from experience of the states that have adopted it, problems they've run into, issues of implementation and testing. And I was able to talk to a couple of individuals about my concerns about the age appropriateness of some of the standards, of the goals for younger elementary, and the basic response they got was, well, we believe kids can learn a lot more than we give them credit for, which is not a strong response to my concerns. But I've, subsequent to that, I, a couple of people have recommended I read the framework for K-12 science education, which is basically the background for that. And so, I, I've been, I've been reading that to understand more of the shift in, in the thinking behind the standards. So, I'm trying to educate myself as to.
Bedside reading, is this kind of?
What's that?
Bedside reading, or you're doing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Oh, well, good for you.
That can happen.
It's pretty good if that document can become bedside reader. It's good. It's a very heavy document.
Richard's a heavy guy. He's a heavy dude.
If you're reading philosophy and the deaf, but this is nothing. Any other?
I would have that, too.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess, are we there? Yes, we are. Thank you. We'll see you next month. It's a little different Tuesday, remember, because it's the third Tuesday, I think. You all have that down.